All right, I want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of Murphysboro Community Unit District 186. And Terry, Mrs. Hines, will you call the board please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Door?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Here.
Mr. Runkie?
Here. Item three is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Beavers, will you be so kind as to leave us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Grody, are there any changes or revisions?
We received today Tri-County, the Tri-County minutes dated September 11th, 2019, and the Tri-County bills dated October 2019. We would like to add those to the consent agenda.
And I'll accept the motion to do that. So moved in a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Closed motion carries, which then moves us to the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of District 186 Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated September the 24th, 2019, District 186 Budget Hearing Minutes dated September 24th, 2019, Applications, Reports, Tri-County Minutes dated September the 11th of 2019, and Tri-County Bills for October of 2019. And I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved in a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is the approval of District 186 Bills for October 2019. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question. The larger packet, page three, first nonprofit, fourth quarter fees. Oh, I see that. Our unemployment. Okay. It's our unemployment payment. And up above that, DG International. I'm going to prefer...
It's the smart temp sensors for the temperature probes and this one's...
For all of our kitchens, our probes to monitor all of our freezers and refrigeration systems. Just required.
I have a question on page three also.
Yes.
The Audit Services.
Yes.
That's the independent state-required audit, correct?
Yes.
That's part of the payment. We did an RFP for Audit Services. This is the second year of that three-year agreement, so this is just a partial payment on their work in progress.
Got it.
Any others? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the District 186 Bills as presented. So moved. Pick one of those for a second. Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Runkie?
Yes, motion carries. Communications, and I believe you said you had three?
Yes.
Dear Murphysboro CUSD 186 Board of Education, I'm expecting my third child this fall with the due date of October 27th. Please accept this letter as my request to utilize sick days for my maternity leave beginning approximately mid-October 2019 through December 2019 with a return date of January the 6th, 2020. I'm currently working with Mr. Ellemeyer to secure a qualified substitute to cover my high school mathematics courses during my absence. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Sincerely, Kelly Kopersheim.
And the recommendation is to approve that leave.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Opposed? Motion carries.
CUSD 186 Board of Education, it is with deep regret and sorrow that I am resigning from my position as cook with Murphysboro CUSD 186 effective immediately. Thank you for the opportunity that I've had. Sincerely, Becky Wyatt.
And the administration recommends that we accept her resignation.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation. So moved in a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
To whom it may concern, I'm excited to share the news that I am expecting twins. My daughter has confirmed, my doctor has confirmed my pregnancy and estimated due date of January 31st, June 20th, but with an early arrival of mid-January. I am requesting a minimum of eight weeks off after delivery pending on my condition and when my doctor releases me. Please let me know if you require confirmation from any doctor, my doctor, Douglas Gates of the New Horizons Medical Group, and I will request that he forward a letter since my due date is in the middle of the year, is my intention to start my leave at the beginning of third quarter and return towards the beginning of fourth quarter depending on the situation. I intend to apply my unused sick and personal days against any time my doctor finds me to be disabled and unable to teach as a result of my pregnancy. My family feels truly blessed and I am so happy to be sharing this experience with the administrators, students, parents, and faculty. Thank you for your support. Sincerely, Carla Baker.
And the recommendation is to approve her leave.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Opposed? Motion carries. That was it?
That's it.
And I believe we had item number eight. We had one fishbowl item?
Yes. From the desk of Stephanie Finkie. Shannon Sterick, the library aide at General Johnny Logan, is creating a library maker space to give students the opportunity to develop fine motor skills and engage their minds with creative play. We just recently received notice that our project has been fully funded through DonorsChoose.org, and the resources should be arriving at General Johnny Logan soon. We are so grateful for Shannon's dedication to providing optimal opportunities for our students.
And that was it, I believe?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Item number nine is the Freedom of Information Act request.
We had several from the MEA. The first one was itemized attorney bills from Tooth Keeney and Cooper that pertain to negotiation matters for August 2019 and September 2019. They then asked for copies of all communications between insurance vendors and the district in which the word "strike" or the phrase "work stoppage" is contained anywhere in the content of the communication. And then finally, they asked for health insurance plan documentation, documentation for any other insurance plan currently in use as a benefit to the teachers, HRA plan documentation, documentation for any benefit. The district is threatening to cut off or adjust downward based on a possible strike, and those are being responded to in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Item number 10 is the recognition of audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinion and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or actions of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Are there any employee concerns? All right, then we will move to Old Business. The first item of business is the review of the freshman honors course selection process, which is enclosure number one in your packet.
See here, it says students from private schools will be required to take the MAP Growth Reading Test in order to acquire a reading RIT score at MMS. Okay? The private school will have to pay for the cost. I think Mr. Carrington and I talked about $15 at that private school. So if a private school, a private school's gonna have to notify their eighth-grade parents that, hey, if you are looking at your children being selected for honors courses as a freshman, they will come, need to come to the middle school, take the MAP test, and acquire a RIT score, a minimum RIT score of 230. Okay? I've already spoken to Pastor Holm at Emmanuel. He's excited for his kids to get the opportunity to take this test. I have not had conversation with St. Andrews yet, and I'm probably going to look at Trinity and Agape and have conversations with them too, as we often have students coming from Trinity and Agape transferring into the high school as well. Okay? And then the third criteria to be chosen will be an English, MHS English Department Created Placement Test. The MHS English teachers will come to the middle school to administer an assessment for students. Students will be given 60 minutes to complete the assessment. They have a required 85% proficiency that the English department, I think, was pretty comfortable with that 85% proficiency on that test.
So they need to hit all three?
All, they'll have to acquire all three. They'll have to have a 3.75 GPA, a 230 reading and language RIT scores, and they'll have to have an 85% on the department-created assessment.
If hypothetically somebody has a 4.0 and scores 100 on the placement or assessment test, there's still gonna be some gray area in there, or no? That person didn't do 230 on the RIT, on the MAP?
We do have in there, as you see at the bottom, it says, once all three sets of data are collected, an objective review will be completed by faculty and administration to where, say, the middle school says, hey, this kid got a 229 on the RIT score, or this kid had a 3.73, they should be in, and then we'll have an objective review from there.
Or he tanked on the RIT score, but it happened to be while this was going on in their family.
Right.
Did you look at any data about how many would've met all those criteria to come into this?
I believe we reached everyone that would've hit this.
Okay, and will this also go to sixth-grade parents, since basically...
It's going to be in their handbook. So it'll be, I've given Mr. Keener a statement last week to put in their handbook in which it will say that the GPAs from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade will be used for selection criteria to be placed in honors classes. We did initially come up with that we would like to see a 4.0 GPA. However, the school leadership team and curriculum council both thought that that was a little high for someone to not be able to get a B their entire middle school career in English and not be chosen because of that happened in sixth grade, so...
And there, will there be a cap? So anybody, if there's 20 students that need these criteria, all 20 will be...
If there's 45, we'll have two sections.
Okay. If there's seven?
We might not meet a class. I mean, if it's a lower number that we can't, we don't have the resources to have that class, then we will not have an honors English 9 that year, or accelerated math, or advanced block biology.
If the private schools want to send their students over for MAP prior to this so they can take the MAP test maybe once before they're taking it, and they're willing to pay, is that something we're gonna allow, or we're gonna tell them they just need to administer MAP on their own?
Um, I, it's something we've not talked about. It's something that probably Mr. Keener, myself, and Mr. Carrington, and Mr. Grody need to talk about.
I just imagine that question coming up.
And it might be a good idea to be able to allow them to if they're gonna pay for it. I mean, they're gonna pay for the cost, and then they get the experience so they can do well on it by December of their eighth-grade year. 'Cause that will be the test that will be used as the December RIT score of their eighth-grade year.
Homeschooled student be treated the same as private?
Um, yeah, I mean, if, they would need that RIT score though.
The hard part with the homeschool is contacting them. I mean, we can contact the ROE and explain it, but that's really the main place that a homeschool kid would need to register, so, yeah.
And so if we move to accelerated integrated math, 1 and 2A, the same thing, the math-specific GPA, four quarters of sixth grade, four quarters of seventh grade, two quarters of eighth grade, they'll need a required math GPA of 3.75. They will also need a math RIT score of 230, and they will need, the math department felt comfortable with an 80% proficiency on their math assessment, 'cause they feel that their math assessment is rather strenuous. So they, they were a little uncomfortable with 85, 95%. They wanted to drop that down to 80% on that. But again, you'll have three criteria there, the GPA, the RIT score of at least a 230, and their department-created assessment. But they will, again, get to go to the middle school and have a 60-minute period to test the middle school students that are interested in applying for these classes.
Without breaking out my calculator, the 3.75 GPA, is that basically a single B on any one semester?
It's gonna be close to that, yes.
Yeah, so basically, they're giving up?
They're gonna be allowed one?
It's lenient, but not...
Correct.
Because it's specific to that?
It's one, yeah, I mean...
That's subject only, okay.
Absolutely. And, and, I mean, I think we have to...
It should be.
Exactly. We're offering a rigorous class, that they need to have the skills in order to be successful in it, and if they're making Bs in a regular math class in middle school, are they gonna be able to handle accelerated math that goes through Math 1 and half of Math 2 in one school year? So, so those are the three requirements, and again, again, for math, once all three sets of data are collected, an objective review will be completed by faculty and administration. And then for the physical earth and block biology, again, science-specific GPA, this dataset will be gathered by collecting their GPA from sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth, and half of eighth grade for those 10 datasets, and it has to be, it's a required 3.75 as well. The MAP score is a little bit different here because the science department wanted to use both reading and math RIT scores, because math plays an integral part in, in your biology classes, they wanted to be able to include both math and reading scores, and there will be a minimum requirement of 230.
So is that an average of 230, or is it combined?
Minimum. The minimum score on both RIT scores will be 230. Yep. And then the MHS Science Department, again, will create a placement test. The science teachers will come to MMS to administer that assessment, and they are requiring an 85% proficiency.
And this one does have a cap?
It does, because, I mean, the fact is, I mean, state law, we have to, we can only have 24 students in a lab set. I mean, if we got to the...
20 or 24?
24. I mean, if we got to the point that there was enough students to where we could have two sections, I mean, we can't have two sections if one of those sections are only gonna have five kids in it. It just, we don't have the resources to do that with our staff, our faculty, the number of science teachers we have. And, I mean, that's the kind of a pickle that we may just have to come across and find a solution to moving forward. As I said in June, there's always gonna be situations that come up, no matter what our policy is with this, but I think it's been long overdue, and, you know, I try to find the positive in the fact that this came up this year, and that now we have a handwritten policy that we can follow, and we can show, and we can use, you know, moving forward. And if it needs adjusted after a year or two, or we're seeing issues with it, we'll revisit it. I don't think it's like a set-in-stone document, it needs to be a document that we can, we can flow through and improve.
So this letter will go to all the eighth-grade parents?
All the eighth-grade parents will get this letter.
What if, perchance, there is a gifted student that you know should be in the honors and they don't turn in an application?
That's their choice. I mean, we have students to do that now. I mean, I had a parent tonight say to me that their son might, is taking pre-calc this year, but they don't feel like they're gonna take calculus next year. They just, it's just not in their cards of things they wanna do, and so, I mean...
But what if, I think you're thinking of like, an eighth grader doesn't take the form home, doesn't show it to mom or dad, maybe mom or dad aren't as involved as some of the other parents might be, and an opportunity for a really bright student is missed because maybe they didn't have the support at home, or maybe mom or dad just didn't know about it, 'cause they didn't turn it in.
I mean, we, I think at some point, we have to get to the point that some of the responsibility's in the student's hands as well, and when it's an eighth grader, an incoming freshman that's doing that, then are they an honors student that should be in this class? If they're not wanting to be in the class, and if they're not gonna take it home, and they're gonna not fill this out, I question whether they're, they should be in this rigorous curriculum.
So this is sent home with the students, or this is mailed to the parents?
I would say we should mail it home. And we can also do an all-call as well to let parents know that it's coming, and an all email to eighth-grade parents.
And that's fine, but if you send it home with the student, then yes...
It could be gone.
And, and it does put some onus on the student to do that, but if you send it to the parents, yeah, the student, you can't really blame the student if the parents didn't fill it out if you're mailing it to the student, or to the parent, I'm sorry. So, I just, I don't wanna miss, 'cause there are some gifted kids out there.
So which way do you think we should do it? Do you think we should mail it, or do you think we should send it to the student?
Probably do both. Probably do both.
And have the all-call. Do it all.
And maybe that's too much, but I don't, I'd rather be over-communicating at this point. I think we've been burned on the other direction.
I think, though, a lot of that, our teachers do a really good job of reaching out to the parents, and if they don't get, if they've got a kid that they think should be in the gifted science, I see the teachers actually calling home and reaching out to them.
My only concern with that, my only concern with that is them contacting, and this was favoritism. So if you blanket it with everybody multiple times, and you can't say, well, I didn't get a call. Yeah.
I think if we mail it home, I think if we send it home with the student, and I think if we do an all-call or an all-email, we're covering a lot of bases there. You know, one, one thing at the end on the application, when they sign, they have a state, the student intent they have to sign. It says, I would like to enroll in the above freshman honors courses next year. I realize that these classes will be rigorous and might include summer assignments. If I do not complete the summer assignment, or if I commit any type of academic dishonesty infraction, I will be immediately removed from that honest course. I commit to completing the summer assignments and work consistently with a positive attitude. I understand that if accepted, I will be enrolled in these classes for the entire year. I, I don't think it should be acceptable that we get three weeks into the school year and somebody says, well, this is too much for me, and I'm backing out. They're enrolled for the year, especially with our guidance department, and our handbook says you have three days to do a schedule change, the first three days of the school year as well, so...
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
When is the next MAP test?
They should've had one in August, or beginning of September, and there will be one this year.
And that's the one that is...
So we will get this rolling pretty quickly.
So for this year, some of these students might, this might be the first time they're taking it, so I'm just saying, it might...
The parochials will be the first time they're taking it.
Thank you, Mr. Ellemeyer.
You know, one last thing, we're, we're having a, for seniors tomorrow night, we're having a fast but completion night, where they can fill out the financial aid applications for college, so hopefully if you spread the news, we did an all-call to parents today, to all senior parents as well, so hopefully parents can come and get that completed. We were gonna have one last week, but with everything going on, we, we're gonna have it tomorrow night, so...
Very good. Thank you. All right, next item under Old Business is the financial update. Mr. Grody?
Yeah, and really what we're waiting for here is just the next legislative session. You know, we need to see what's gonna happen with property taxes and with the retirement and whatnot, the cost shift, so everything's going as it has.
Very good. Item number three is the approval of bid for two seven-passenger vans.
Yeah, and we did, we contacted various car dealers with our specs. We've got a, we had one person, one iK Honda, send back information. It's $29,000 per van for a total of $58,000. We have budgeted $60,000, so that meets the budgeted amount. The recommendation is that we approve this as presented. I will say this, the total number of miles is around 35,000 in a year, so in four years, if we do 50 cents a mile, you're looking at $70,000 for reimbursements of travel in four years where we could buy vans and send people off to their things that way, so...
You're saying if there aren't vans and employees have to take their own personal vehicles?
If they have to take their own personal vehicles, yes, and we reimburse them at the federal rate.
But we also have to purchase gas for these vehicles, insurance.
Yeah. The, the 70,000, though, that comes from staff development, would come out of the Ed Fund, where this is coming out of the Transportation Fund, so I like that, $58,000, so...
Other questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation for the purchase of the two vans. So moved. In a second? Second. Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Dr. Door?
No.
Mrs. James?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
And Mr. Runkie?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the New Business, and we just have one item under New Business. It's the approval of the 2018-2019 Audit Report, which was handed to us.
You do have that at your place? Yes, you do have that at your place. These were delivered, hand-delivered by our auditor, Don Hoffman, Friday afternoon, which is why they were not near-board packet. And so, really, no surprises with the audit, the audit report this year. The same opinion, financial opinion that we've been getting for in all school districts in Illinois that are on the cash basis as we are, which is a recommendation from the Illinois State Board of Education for a district our size. We get an adverse opinion based on, because we're not following generally accepted accounting principles, but we are following the accounting principles prescribed by the State Board of Education for school districts. So it's just kind of a catch for audits of schools, that they would rather us follow GAAP, which is what they call that, but understanding that is, that is not what the State Board prescribes for districts. So we do cash basis, and this is, this is common for districts throughout the state. So this is, this isn't new. We've been getting this opinion for a number of, a number of years. As far as other items noted, noted, they also test our internal controls, and our audit report on, on page A5 notes that they do not identify any deficiencies in internal controls that they consider to be material weaknesses. They do have, we do have the same findings, this are the last two pages of your audit report, that are the same for a number of years for our district and for many districts, and that is segregation of duties because of the staff, our size in, in the business office. We don't have the number of staff to maintain the segregation of duties that they require for everything. We have a lot of internal controls in place, but I don't know any districts that don't get this in our area because of our funding and our staff sizes. Also, the other is, and I've said this year after year with our, with our audits, with Arthur Edgerson and the Enron scandal many years ago, at one time, our auditors, they would come in, they do our audit, our financial statements, and then they would also express an opinion. But now, the lay of the land is the expectation that we, we do all the financial statements ourselves, all the notes to the financial statements, and all they do is come in and express an opinion. No school districts of our size have the staff to do that kind of work, so that's an additional corrective action finding that we will continue to have as long as districts our size in, you know, tier one, tier two schools under the evidence-based fan, evidence-based plan have the size of staff that we do. So, no real surprises at all. Our financial statement really mirrors the financial statements you've been receiving, you know, since the end of June with our fund balances. We did have one, one $4,000 adjustment made to our education fund, fund balance as a result of some payroll withholding issues. We had a glitch with our accounting system at the end of the year, which our auditors made that adjustment for us, so, you know, we are still sitting right where we were at the end of June when we, when I gave you financials for June 30th, and so that's on page eight, the, you know, actual fund balances. So that information is in much detail, which I can answer questions once you have time to absorb these audits. Again, apologize that we are just giving these, but the, today's a drop-dead date for audit reports due in Illinois, so our auditors have been very busy trying to get those out to all the districts, and so they'll be filing this electronic with the State Board of Education. So that's why it's a handout today, is we do have the need to approve the independent audit prepared by Emily and Hoffman, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, or that it would be administration's recommendation for board approval of the 1819 Audit Report.
Questions from the board?
We'll be posting that on the website.
If we were to hypothetically have enough staff to, to cover the responsibilities that they're talking about, how many additional staff would that be?
You know, we've asked that question.
Yeah.
And they're not giving an answer.
Yeah, they...
Seriously.
Because the person who writes the checks can't deposit the checks, and can't be the person that is entering it into the books necessarily, so, yeah.
They won't answer that question.
Okay.
Because we've asked, and that's, that's a common...
They've indicated a lot.
Yeah.
At least three. At least three.
Yeah, and then they tell us every school district gets the same finding.
Right, okay. I was just, I was just?
Yeah, that's a fair question. We've, we've asked that question, and we've had that conversation in some of our meetings, where we're meeting, you know, with other superintendents and business managers in the area, and that's, and they said they really won't give us a straight answer, just more than what you're doing, like a lot more, a little more, so.
They can't tell you how to do it, just that you're doing it wrong.
Right, right.
Other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the audit report. So moved, and a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a need to go into closed session?
I'll make the motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2 of the Open Meetings Act 5, under Mark and Powell Statutes 120/2C, to review the appointment, appointment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal specific to flows of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity, and to collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees, other representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
And a second?
Second.